All rise for a pledge of the flag.
Pledge of the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the secretary, former, call attendance, please.
Here.
Yep.
Here.
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 Here. Okay. All the board members have received the minutes from February the 7th. If there is no discussion regarding the minutes, entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Okay, motion's made, consecutive by?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is an adjourned public hearing for Myers Run LLC subdivision. Entertain a motion to open the adjourned public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Uh-oh, microphone. Yeah.
We're here before you this evening in the hopes of secret determination, preliminary plat, and approval to fell the trees.
Okay. Yeah, just before we go, I'll run some of these things just. We had some questions, I guess, from last meeting, just want to make sure that we touch on the issue of the stormwater. There was the discussion about curbs and catch basins. Can you just describe what changes have taken place in the last meeting to this meeting?
Okay, the applicant, Schober, met with the highway superintendent and John. And the highway superintendent said he did not have a problem with the standard rural road that we proposed, no curves. What, have been added is that there's a catch basin added here? Because basically the drainage comes down both sides of the roads in shallow soil, and then it'll cross over the road to get to the bioretention and detention here. So, added a catch basin here, made this a double catch basis. And then took this rating and widened it out so that it'll have a less sharp turn to catch this.
Okay.
Can we add some chambers in addition to that?
Yeah, and then we add some chambers and.
We went over all this with Mike.
How big are those chambers?
They're five feet long. And there's 25 feet long, so they'd under.
Okay, all right, just verified, the engineer defined what the proposed changes as they.
Yeah. They corrected, we did highway superintendent's office to go over the changes and Mr. Sheehan was satisfied with that he could maintain this without any issue. And we have since that meeting reviewed the SWIP report that they submitted with these changes incorporated into it. And it does appear that with those that they. The drainage should be functional and everything should get to the stormwater management practice as designed.
All right, and will prevent anything from getting across the road. That was the other issue, because that was early on in the public hearing process.
Right.
With Pizza Terror being here, that was, that was all brought up. So as long as you feel comfortable that that's not gonna. Happy to, yeah, to further, you know, to further water going across the road to those neighbors. Okay.
Correct.
All right. Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions?
I got one. Round, and you only have catch basin on one side, and that surface drainage on the other? Is that correct?
Yes.
You can input two catch basins in to help alleviate some of that water coming down the hill. One on each side.
We could add another one on this side.
I just don't want to have the people across the street coming back and blaming us for something that we could have taken care of.
Sure, I can.
So I think that would be a. Okay, we're good.
Here, anybody else? No, okay. All right, so we're all good, so. Is there anybody here from the audience that wishes to make comment regarding this application? Okay, seeing there's none. At this point, I guess, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make it.
Second.
Okay, motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I guess the first item on the, that we have to consider is the negative declaration for the project. Very secre, everybody's received a copy. Entertain a motion to approve the negative declaration.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion's made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. Next item is the preliminary subdivision. The resolution for preliminary subdivision approval. You have no, there's no issues you have with what's been conditioned?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision approval?
I'll move that, second.
Okay. All right, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay. So we've also received a, a letter from the town engineer regarding a bond amount for a tree felling. And I guess it's your intention to ask for permission to fell the trees at this point?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And this is just to fell the trees? This has nothing to do with, you know, chipping them, stumping? This is just clearly just gonna. Okay.
How's your process for doing that? Are you gonna drop the trees?
Guys with saws are a machine, I think.
Yeah. So, I mean, we'll coordinate with John, we'll have a construction tracking pad for any machines that have to get in there, so no dirt gets on Myers, and then he'll go and drop them, and usually they'll go back and.
That doesn't work, because then it becomes a grubbing issue, because you can't get the equipment in there.
Yeah, so we're gonna probably have a staging area, you know, as we get to that.
There, again, you're gonna be grubbing, that's not part of falling of the trees.
Uh, what, sometimes what I've seen when they just dropped them is they kind of drop them, put them in a, like a small bunch.
But that's still not dropping, dropping the trees is dropping the trees and leaving them there until you are able to proceed with the next step.
Yes, so they can start at the top.
Because we just discussed this earlier, everybody's very. You can't bring equipment in there, because it's a different setup, you're grubbing.
Yeah, they won't be, they can't pull stumps or anything, so if they bring any equipment in, it's gotta be equipment that can get around the trees and just cut them over the.
Yeah, I did talk to our figure, they have all the equipment, so they use a pretty large timber jack, so we'll just drop them and then.
He's just gonna, yeah, so.
He's gonna drop them.
So bottom line, he's just gonna drop it. Gonna come back at another time, and you're pay him another time to come back, and then he can, after you have your approval.
He's not setting up a staging area, you're not gonna pick them up and de-lim them and stick them in a pile. You're just dropping them in place.
Right, what Mike meant by staging was the construction entrance, just so they can park their trucks and things at the entrance and not mud on the road. No, I meant pickup trucks and the. Not, not a logging operation.
Okay. So at this point, I mean, all right, so at this point, basically, we're gonna, we'll approve the, well, I'll put it out for somebody to make a motion to approve the tree felling, or approve the felling of the trees as outlined in the submission that we just received today. And also to authorize, also to approve the, the bond amount of $13,398.
How much?
$13,398. That's the bond amount as recommended by the town engineer.
Give me two motions there, just one for each, or one for both?
Uh, we can do one, right, just one for both.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with none, the motion carries. Okay.
So the next step on that is to get either a bond, cash deposit, letter of credit for approval by the town board. Town board's meeting is next Monday, so we need, the agenda closes on Thursday. To you, the undertaking that needs to be signed. And then, you know, most people post the cash deposit, which is, which would be refundable upon the filing of the plat, right? Typically how we do it. You know, the other option.
We just need the check beforehand.
The other option is to get a bond, but most people find that through a $19,000 bond or a letter of credit, it's just as easy to do it.
Okay, so you need the check by Thursday? Or, or the bond?
Right.
You need, you need these finances by Thursday?
By Thursday, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well. Okay. Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for a site plan and special use permit for Myers Corners Road self-storage amended.
Good evening.
All right, good evening.
We're here this evening to represent the present project, Ward 169 Myers Corner. The existing building's about a 22,000 square foot building. It's, it's in the rear.
It, microphone?
Yep.
So they can, I got it close so they can hear you. All right, thanks.
So, it's a 22,000 square foot building, two-story, it was, it's been vacant for a number of years. The site used to be a data center, the lower floor is, is basically set up for data. The applicant wishes to come in and retrofit the building for indoor climate control storage. The project sits on a 31 acre piece of property. As you know, there is a roadway that serves our frontage onto Myers Corner.
Go ahead. I have to open, no, 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 just, I'll let you finish the description of the project, and then we'll, we'll open the public hearing at that point.
That's really it, I mean, we're not proposing a lot of improvements, we are looking for entrances into the structure that currently are not there, which would serve as basically entrances for vehicular or people to utilize the site. One of them's in the rear, and one of them's at the existing loading dock, which is on the east side of the site, and we are proposing another one at the northeast corner of the site, or building, sorry. And that's really it.
Okay, all right, well, at this point, entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Public hearing's open, all right. I guess we did have some comments from both the planner and the engineer. Actually, let me start with the board, does the board have any, anybody have any questions regarding the project as it's been proposed so far?
Outside storage, we definitely have nothing on the table for that?
There's none proposed.
Not now, but in the future, maybe?
I. I don't know what the future brings, but right now, no.
Is that mentioned in the, in the plans?
I believe we do have it. But there is none, there, currently, there is none, so.
There's nothing proposed.
Correct.
So, I mean, as long as it's clearly, you know, noted on the plans.
Okay.
And then obviously it'll be, that will be carried through to the resolution of approval also.
Okay.
We had the issue of the lighting, correct?
Yeah. So, in the, in the planner's, in the planner's letter, there was a remark regarding the bug, the bug rating of the lights. There's a bug rating of five that was listed.
Your, your bug rating on the lighting fixtures that you identified is B1, U5, G1? Would it be possible to find a fixture that would accomplish similar goals but have a lower uplighting rating?
I mean, this, this thing directly came downward.
I know, I appreciate that, but based on the design of it and the bug rating, it's suggested there would be some uplighting. I just caught that in the, in the description of the fixture in your lighting plan. Something that is shielded, something that is directed downwards.
I could do that. We could do a shield.
Do we know for a fact whether this lighting's gonna affect any of those neighbors that were in the back?
We're, we're only proposing lighting at, at the proposed entrances, that's it. Everything else on the site is existing lighting.
Where's the, the homes that, border that?
Bottom line.
Over there?
Is there lighting on that side? Existing lighting? Uh, there's, there's some light holes there, right, but.
Well, you still gotta give us all the information on all of that.
I, there's, there's a.
What, what do you want about those lights?
Just want, I mean, we're not, I mean, it, we'll be looking for.
We have new lighting levels, so these things all got changed.
Yeah, but they're not changing, well, they're not changing the lighting, no, that's the issue. It's the existing lighting, you're only adding to the building. Do I?
They're adding more lighting, doesn't that open up the subject on the other lighting in the property?
Well, for what they're, for what they're adding, I mean, are we gonna, do we want a whole site, I mean, it, well, that becomes, does everybody want a whole, the whole thing on the whole site?
Well, we don't know what's there, that light could be shining, you know, right in the neighbor's house right now, we don't know that.
Are they operational right now?
They are, I mean, we can. He can drive there at night, I mean.
This is heavily wooded, this is all wooded.
Oh, it's wooded, so.
Right, so it's kind of shielded, that's the.
See this, this is all wooded.
So. I just want to take in regard to the people that live next door. I understand, but they've been there. Light shined in their face.
But they've been there, the only thing we're adding is lights over the doors, that's it.
Yeah, I know.
That's it.
Okay.
And they're small wall packs, they're not, they're not the mega wall packs, they're very small, they shine down, it's basically to light the doors, that's it. So.
I did have a question, I mean, John and I had a couple of different questions for more information regarding the landscape guidelines that you've proposed.
Okay.
I noticed that each of them has what looks like an existing lighting hole in the center of them, are those proposed to remain?
Yeah, no, we're not taking them out, they, they will remain, they're actually showing on the plan. Really, all we're gonna do is saw cut the pavement, excavate down to get to, let's say, more virgin material, fill it in with, let's say, better soil, and just do plantings around it.
Okay.
We didn't want to propose curbs, because you have drainage that goes right across that part a lot in a diagonal way, so we just wanted to keep that going and not have to redirect it.
I guess that was my, that was John's question, was whether or not there was curving?
No.
So that we can understand?
No, it's right on.
How these will affect the, the drainage of the existing site?
So they're, they're not intended to act as like rain gardens or anything like that? Okay.
If you look at the detail, it's just basically saw cut, remove it, and then.
Go down 30 inches or so. Do you think that that, because I mean, they will, we're not directing the drainage towards them, but they will catch water, they'll catch a lot of water. Is that gonna be an issue at 30, 30 feet down, I mean, not 30, 30 inches down? Would be enough to not flood them every time it rains, I guess?
I, I don't see that being an issue.
Contributing. Okay. And then our other question was about signage, we need a little bit more information on your signage plan, the locations and the dimensions.
Yeah, we were showing three, only because of the drive back there, obviously.
You kind of want to know where you're going, sure.
Yeah, but if, if it's a code issue, I understand it's a code issue, probably eliminate the middle.
Okay. All right. Are they gonna run into code issues with two, though?
The board could waive it, seeing how far it is from the road.
Are they directional signs, that's all?
Yeah, it's basically, you know.
That should be fine with an arrow.
So what I'm proposing, you want a road, one back here, because it gets kind of confusing back here, you can't quite see the building, and you're not really sure where you're going, so we're, we're trying to promote, hey, go further, and then obviously the entrance, so.
Are there any signs on the building itself?
There's going to be a sign, which we do show, and none of the signs are illuminated.
Okay.
What we do show.
Is the road sign illuminated?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Basically, these are just freestanding signs, pretty much what's out there now. This is just, these are mounted on the building, but they're not, they're not backlit, they're not, they're not lit at all.
You said these, is it?
I'm sorry, this is one sign, but it's, you know, it mounts on the building.
Okay.
Towards the.
Yeah, I was curious where it is.
Yeah, it's on the entrance, so again.
Is that, is that indicated on the plans now, which side it's gonna be?
I can show you, we, we have elevations, the architect, but there is elevation to show this is only on the front of the building as you come down the road, so it'll be.
Where's the one at the road?
Right here, it's, it's right by the one that's there now. There's one that's like a 169.
I know, so how does the board feel about, that's like two freestanding signs?
No, no, that one's coming out.
The addressed one is coming out?
Yeah, that's, that's.
So can we just see what that looks like again? Because I think the board didn't see how plain that is, replacing a nice monument sign.
So you have one new sign by the road.
No, whatever the address is.
Yeah, there's no monuments.
They like to see nice signs, I just want them to see the head of it.
So, there's another issue in that up on the road is, is Mycor Holdings.
Yeah, that's on the other side of the, that's on the left side of the road, as you go in.
Right, but they own, so this parcel, this parcel does not, the driveway for this parcel is not, is owned by Mycor Holdings. So, for purposes of, you know, we just need either, you know, the easement, or right-of-way, or whatever documentation would authorize you to put the sign on their property.
Are you okay with that sign?
So there's two, there's two separate parcels here?
The front parcel?
The, right.
There is two.
Okay.
Yeah, this.
And that, well, there's, there's actually four parcels. The driveway entrance is owned by Mycor Holdings, Central Hudson has fee title cutting across back to their substation. Then there's Mycor Holdings, which is the building up front, and then there's parcels in the back.
Okay, all right.
So there's, there's actually four separate parcels on the driveway.
So they need the permission to put the sign out in the front to begin with, then?
Right.
Okay, so it's just, so it's that one sign that you have on the, at the front on the road, and then another one halfway between the entrance and the.
Right here. And we were proposing one here.
Now, is that also on Mycor's property?
I'm sorry.
Would that other sign there?
Uh, no, that would be, oh, no, it would.
Okay.
So they have for both, so they have for both signs, then?
Yeah.
How high is this on?
The top of this property?
Yeah, it's basically the same sign that's out there, it's about 42, 3 feet wide.
And one other thing, Mark.
Yes, sir.
In the previous submission, you talked about a total of 500 units in the building, and now we're seeing 1425, so.
That came from the applicant.
Okay.
But what happened is, when they actually started laying this out, they took the bigger units and they made them smaller, so drove it up to.
So 1425 is the number?
No, that's what they're, that's what the architect has laid out. I mean, honestly, the site could support it, it's a very large building.
No, it's just, it wasn't, it wasn't clear with the latest submission, because I think there was still some paperwork that referenced 500, so we just want to know what.
So, I, I guess that's one of the questions, we kind of had the discussion as far as, so is, is it still proposed to have a phasing plan?
We'll phase inside, only because it takes time to.
But I mean, is it by story, or like first story first?
Yeah, I don't, I think they're gonna focus, and I'm just speaking on a school, but I, the conversations we've been having is, they're gonna focus, obviously, on the first floor. You've got to take out the, the access floor, you know, we've got to install columns, because believe it or not, this floor, the second floor is only rated for about 80 PSF, code requires 125, so we had to add some structure, so they're gonna, they're gonna have to kind of do that in phases.
Okay.
And then the second floor, once this first floor is kind of reinforced, the building will come up and start going inside.
Because I guess one of the questions, and this is really more of a building question, is, does it really matter from the approval, the number of units, or is it really more a function of the square footage dedicated for storage space? Because I guess my, I don't think we have any kind of bulk requirement dealing with the, the storage unit. So the question is, I don't want to be in a situation where every time they want to reconfigure the plan, they have to come back.
Right.
To get a change.
They wouldn't for the interior.
Yeah, no, I mean, well, I mean, is there, I mean, can, between yourself and the architect who's handling this, could you come up with a, like, defined plan of what you're looking to do?
Yeah, I, I think.
Just so, you know, if it's, you know, we're gonna do all the structural work on the first floor, you know, and that's gonna be part of phase one, so that they know that that's all said and done.
When you, when you say plan, you mean like a narrative of what?
Yeah, narrative, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be anything fancy, but at least lay out so that there's a course of action of what's gonna happen in there.
Okay.
In the different phases, and that will kind of help, not only, not only with our decision, but also will help the, you know, the building department and everybody else going forward.
Okay.
Okay? I think that, that's important, the other thing was the, you had mentioned about elevations, because I didn't see elevations in this packet.
I, I will get those.
Yeah. If we can get the building elevations, so that we have it for the record.
Yep.
So that, you know, whatever we're approving, be, you know, signage is the one issue, sounds like, but just so we can get a, a better idea of the overall outside of the building.
Okay.
I didn't realize that you had mentioned it, and that was in the back of my mind the other night when I was looking at this.
Yeah, we're not changing, we're not gonna really, we're not changing the building itself, just adding the one entrance, the other entrances are existing, so, but I will, I, we have them, I will get them.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if, if they've already have something put together, then at least they can submit that with the, you know, you know, with the phasing.
Okay.
Anybody, any other board members?
Has the building been gutted?
Sorry?
Has the building been gutted out already?
Has it been gutted?
Yeah. Is it empty or?
It's, it's pretty empty now, but it's not been gutted for what they're gonna do. I mean, there's still drop ceilings, there's still the computer access flooring, second floor basically has been gutted, but that's been gutted for a while, so.
All right, so, with that said, this is a public hearing, so let me open up the floor to the public. I don't know if there's anybody here tonight. I don't know if there's anybody here tonight that wishes to speak on behalf of this project?
Yes.
Yep, please come on up to the podium, and then state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Matthew Jezonowski, eight-four Fields Court, primary neighbor that would be adjacent right to the building that they're discussing.
Could you point on, on his plan right there behind us, if you just show us which lot is yours?
Right here.
Okay.
So my road frontage to one fifty-five is twenty-two feet to asphalt. There's tree business back there parking the trucks right now, in the parking lot.
Oh, in the back.
Right, and they've been nice, and I've asked them not to use the one fifty-five entrance, which has helped a lot, but even with the FedEx trucks, Amazon trucks. My bedroom window, which you can't see the house, it's just the acres right here. You can, the window, if a truck drives by, physically see inside the window, what I'm awfully concerned about is the privacy of how you're going to secure the client's fourteen twenty-five, I think you said?
Yeah.
Going in from one sixty-nine entrance with the, with the light, as opposed to one fifty-five where there's no light, and the road frontage is a lot in better shape than it is in the back. The improvements for the asphalt would have to be necessary, because if you were to go in the back, it's, I mean, it's, it's horrifying. So even if, if I were to rent something over there, I'm not going to go in at one sixty-nine, I'm going to go in at one fifty, one fifty-five. But with basically no buffer zone or anything, every single truck, every single car, and, you know, if, if, I'm sure there's going to be multiple U-holes and all that, especially on the weekends, what are the hours of operation? How are you going to distinguish which entrance they're going to use? I can see every single light, regardless of how wooded this is. You know, it, it's noise, even in one sixty-nine, there's a cooling system back there with a humming noise, and I have a four-year-old, and when it turns off, she can't sleep. So we, we hear everything back there, so it's not, I'm, I'm actually grateful someone's going to occupy the building. There's a cooling system on, right, right next to the loading docks.
Which is not operational.
Something's operational back there, because there's always loud humming noise, regardless of that, I mean, there's, yeah. But, you know, it's just a privacy that we're concerned about, because right now, we call the police once a week with cars that are back there, kids doing whatever, kids are kids, people are people, but when they come back there and they shine their lights, this park lot, one fifty-five, which isn't one sixty-nine, but as soon as they park here, the lights go right into the doors, right into our diner room. And there's no means of any type of privacy. And being twenty-two feet from my property to asphalt, it's even simple, you know, people walking by, there's no, no fence, no, no trees, nothing. That's my biggest concern, and if my wife was here in Florida, she would have a million more concerns also, so it's nothing that we're opposed about not having a new client in the back, which we're excited about, it's just how are you going to protect our privacy from them not using one fifty-five? And that's a huge concern.
Yeah, I don't know how we can do that, I mean, they have access.
Because we're, like, the loading docks, I mean, that's going to be, I mean, we could hear, you know, pin drop back there just because of the acoustics. So when they start loading in where those loading docks are, I just don't know how you're going to force those people from one sixty-nine around rather than coming at one fifty-five. I mean, there's means that could be worked out, a fence, trees, or something, some type of that, to enclose that buffer zone between, you know, I think it's roughly a hundred twenty feet. That it's really extremely, and, and again, with kids and all that stuff, I don't, you know.
Should go and take a look at that.
It's not.
No.
Right, so that's like the biggest, biggest concern that we got over there, and, you know, just the entrance, the exiting, the amount of people, hours of operation, is, is any of that being discussed yet?
All right, could we ask you a question, you just, you're supposed to be addressing us and not the applicant's engineer?
I'm sorry, guys, I'm sorry.
I mean, you guys are sitting there having a conversation, I mean, we are too, but we got to kind of keep it focused with the board itself, so I mean, so, I mean, other than, I mean, the privacy issues, and, and noise issues from there, but what, what else is there that?
Well, hours of operation. You know, because this is going to be a twenty-four seven operation, where it's like, I got to be worried every time, I mean, everyone knows life is a little bit different now.
Yep, no, I know, I know what you're saying. Now, we'll, we'll make sure that they address the hours of operation.
And it's, it is the loading dock that I'm awfully concerned about, just because, again, they're not going to drive from, they're going to come in through one fifty-five entrance.
And access it through that entrance as opposed to the other?
With literally, I mean, you know, I can't even stand out, you know, it, it's, you know, it's frustrating as it is right now, but with an additional overwhelming amount of traffic coming through, and especially with trucks and U-Haul trucks, can't see technically right through my house, it's kind of, it's not a very comfortable situation. But again, though, I mean, my. My property line to the park lot is twenty-two feet in certain sections.
Would speed bumps help with that, as a deterrent?
It, the only thing that will really physically help is some type of barrier, just to give us privacy. It's, you know, it's already, it's already come to that point where it's.
Does that property you guys have access to? Put a, a screen up?
Well, that would be. For one fifty-five, the building here, this is not.
Right, it's, it's two separate, you have two separate properties, two separate owners.
They've tried, they've tried multiple things and stuff like that, but.
About a tree row of everything?
Well, it's, I want to look at it, because I'm not sure we have rights to do that.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not all your property, I understand.
We're renting it, my, my clients aren't renting the site, so we often have rights to do things like that.
Right, that's, that's, yeah.
But that's a, that's a separate property owner.
So then we're going to need the owner here, it's as simple as that.
No, 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 it's a totally separate parcel altogether, so it's two different owners. The property in the back, the guy that owns the front parcel has nothing to do with the back parcel, apparently.
I guess you could ask them if they allow.
Just mention a fence, a white fence or something like that.
But that would be on the other, on the other parcel of property with a totally different owner who's got no, really has no, no say in this application right now.
That becomes tough, then, that becomes tough, yeah.
It becomes a, I mean.
Because if you were to see the tree line, most of the trees are dead. It's very minimal blockage until the spring, when, you know, the weeds and all that grow into it, but it, it's not, it's not protection, it's not privacy, it's, either, it would have to be shedded and new trees, or some type of fence.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what you're saying, I mean, that's the one, the one issue, you know, where you're directly looking at the back, I guess, which, I guess is kind of considered your side property, you know, which is, you know, right to the back of the, you know, which goes right to the back of the building we're talking about now. You know, regarding the improvements, that's one thing, we have a pretty good distance there. It's the other property line which is going to the other building, the one fifty-five, which seems to be the issue.
Right, because we, you know, we've had a, you know, talked to the schools to get the buses off the front property, because just a few of themself come right over, so it's, I, I understand, when I purchased the property, I knew what I was getting myself into. But, I mean, it's just, you know, at that time, it was just an office facility, not an everyday business, and school buses and trucks.
Yeah.
You know, again, a lot has changed and evolved since then.
Yeah, but to prevent the access back there is.
Right, and like I said, the biggest is, well, basically, again, you can't really see the house with this picture, but it's about a hundred twenty feet where it's just completely visible, so it's just every single car that comes in, you know, you like, even in the morning when the guys come in to work, you get, it's, I get up awfully early, but, you know, my wife and daughter's down.
So we'll take that, we'll, we'll have the, we'll have the applicant.
You know, there's plenty of.
Explore opportunities.
Yeah, well, I mean, will there be some type of solution?
Let's, let's let the applicant, we, we've received the comments tonight.
Right.
Again, that's the purpose of the public hearing, is for you to come in.
Like, my wife is in Florida.
And express your, express your concerns to the board.
Right.
You know, we'll have, you know, we'll have the applicant, and we'll also have staff look at it too, I mean, I don't know if there is any way to resolve it, because again, we're talking about another piece of property other than the one that we have an application for today.
Because theoretically, the entrance would be at one sixty-nine with the traffic light, correct?
Right. Yes, that's where.
Realistically, it's all going to come in at one fifty-five entrance.
I don't know if that'd be true, I really don't, the primary access that we're proposing above is at the other side. So if they come in one fifty-five, it's.
Yeah, well, I mean, with the loading box.
You did mention that.
Okay.
Mark, that says for this facility only, on that drive? Just a little sign, for this facility only.
The issue is that there is access, they do have full access in the back, right? The back property has access on both sides.
They have access both sides.
And, and your, you know, your client is renting from the property owner, which may or may not be willing to alter the circulation of that site. Because that would be, ideally, that would be the solution, we would alter the circulation of the site, so that if you wanted to access the storage, you could only come off of this other, but I don't know that to be possible based on what the owner is willing to accommodate.
Okay. Let's, we'll have the applicant look into it and give us something back, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, and like I was asking, gentlemen, too, it was like hours of operation, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, like, you know.
Yeah, yeah, those, those, again, those, those comments are being put on the record tonight.
Okay.
And for the next meetings, before they appear, they'll have to submit the answers to the issues that were brought up tonight.
Okay, all right.
And then we'll go from there.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, is, is there anyone else that wishes to speak regarding this application? Okay, seeing that there's no one else that wishes to speak, it's probably be in our best interest to adjourn this to a.
Yes, definitely.
Date certain. The question will come up now, how long do you believe it would take for you to come back with the requested information?
Well, one of the, one of the things I'd like to ask John, if I can get some sort of relief on this topography. Right now, surveyors are eight, eight, nine, ten weeks out, and I, to get topography for this site would be very difficult. I'd be happy to meet out there, it's flat, and we don't plan on making any grade changes other than the grade changes adjacent to the building. I did show spot elevations, which I'm hoping are as big as can be, but the changes are minor, so I was hoping we could waive the, the need to do a full blown topography on this site.
Yeah, I, I don't think we were asking for that.
Oh, well.
No, we.
I.
Well, they mentioned it, though.
Yeah. No, there were some, some areas where it, it was difficult to discern between what's existing and what's proposed, we just want that a little bit better defined.
Okay, any spot elevations I've shown are proposed, so, but I, I'll, I'll make that clear.
Okay, yeah, no, we weren't asking for the entire.
Just the, just the area of improvements there, okay?
I would also mention, just while you're here, the, the project description that you're developing.
Yeah.
I mean, the one thing is the, the change in the number of units, but also any updated language, if you could just update the EAF as well.
Okay.
Which I think should also have the hours of operation in it.
Okay.
What, that it does, or?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, I, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I, I don't remember what they are off the top of my head either, but.
Okay.
There's certainly a line item for the, on the.
I think we should go out and take a peek at that.
I guess, also to the, to the question of, of the sign.
Well, you guys want to go out and do a.
Yeah, I agree with Mark.
Field trip? Yeah, because I want to see exactly what, you know.
All right, let's give it a.
Yeah, dusk, kind of, yeah, yeah.
Get too many, well, get too many things going on here, guys. All right, so you've guys are all good now, the questions and answers?
The only, the only other question I had with, related to SECA was, do they need a county work permit for the sign on Myers Corners?
They'll need to get a.
No, I don't, it sounds like the sign's off the right of way, so I don't think they need a.
Okay.
I don't believe they would need a.
But if, if it, if it ends up being in the counties right of way, they just need a.
A work permit.
A work permit, okay. But they don't need a previous, they don't need a prior approval for that?
They won't get the sign permit unless we have a sign off from the county.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not going to right of way.
So they can do that when they're ready.
I'm off the right of way.
All right, so one of the, so, all right, so one of the questions was just brought up about, by the board members, we're planning, I guess, they want to set up a field trip to go out and take a look at the site.
Okay. Want to wait at snows or rains, or?
Huh?
You want to wait at snows or rains?
Well, for one, one comment was to go out at night, because that way.
Around six o'clock at dusk, you know, kind of so we could see, you know.
Well, next week.
That's if we're doing it this week.
Yeah, daylight savings.
Next week it gets later, so.
That's true.
Yeah, so what's the, what's the choice of the board here, do we, do you want to do this week, later on this week, or do you want to do next week at some point?
Whatever works for you, we'll make it work.
Works for who?
Your boss.
Yeah. I, I'm good any night, I think this week.
How about tomorrow?
Yeah, any night but tomorrow, any night but tomorrow. Sorry about that.
Thursday night?
How's, how's the tenth on Thursday?
I can't do Thursday.
I can do Thursday.
What, what night, Wednesday?
No, Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, you got to go this Wednesday, all right.
Do you do tomorrow or do you do Friday?
Well, tomorrow we can't do.
Tomorrow's not good, yeah, all right, how about we do, how about, huh?
Sunday?
Sunday night?
No.
All right, it's getting complicated now, well, Sunday night would have to be seven o'clock anyway.
We can do Friday.
Setting our clocks ahead.
Set one for you? You sure?
When?
Friday night.
Friday night's fine.
Friday night's good.
Paul?
No, good. I can do Wednesday, Thursday.
Monday. You do Monday? Next Monday? Next Monday?
We're good, whatever they say.
Uh, next Monday is good. Paul?
No. Monday's good.
Not next Monday. Mondays are bad nights. Tuesdays, Tuesday's good, the fifteenth?
How about the sixth Tuesday of next month?
Next Wednesday and sixteenth is wide open.
How we, how we doing, how we doing now, let's go back to Tuesday, the fifteenth?
I'm good.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
That'll be seven o'clock, because daylight savings.
Seven o'clock. Okay, okay. All right, motion to set a field trip for Tuesday, the fifteenth at seven o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, so we'll go out, we'll take a look at the, the conditions, you know, obviously.
I won't be able to be there this board.
That's fine, we'll go out and we'll, we'll take a look at that. So back to the, to the adjournment, to adjourn this public hearing to another date, how long would it be for you to get the discussed items together?
I mean, I could, I could probably have them for the next meeting if that's okay with the board.
Okay, they give, if they submit that for the meeting, like, a week ahead of the meeting?
I can, yeah.
I mean, I think it's in two weeks.
Huh?
Yeah, two weeks, and then he, they have to have the reviews that Wednesday. We're only giving them a few days if he's going to take a week. And just for these.
All right, so let's, um.
You tell me.
All right, let's, let's make this easy, let's put it off to the, the first meeting in April. April fourth.
Is it, April fourth?
Okay, so make a, somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to April fourth?
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Bruce, I would, I would just mention for your field trip, because I won't be there, I won't be able to take a look at the existing lighting, and it won't be on the plans. But something the board could ask the applicant to consider would be the dimming or the, the timed shut off of the lights coinciding with business hours. That would be one way to mitigate the, the existing lighting on site.
The problem with shutting the lights off completely, he just said there's a lot of people that go behind the buildings.
The lights are on at night, all night long.
Yeah, but there's people going, if you shut the lights off, you don't know what's going to go on back there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this is a security issue now, he just mentioned it.
I mean, for the board, it's more informational purpose, just to see what's actually there, get a, get a feeling for it at night, get a feeling for what the current lighting is right now, if it is, you know, overpowering or not. If there is a noise issue, you know, from any mechanical systems on the building, I mean, you know, that's, we'll go, it gives us a better idea of what we have and what needs to be addressed. And then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bruce, do you want me to join you on that site visit, or?
If you're, if you're available.
Okay.
Yep, that'd be fine. Okay. All right, so our next item on the agenda. All right, so our next item on the agenda this evening is Central Hudson KM electric transmission line replacement. Gotta be excused for a second.
You wanna go?
Yeah, come on.
Any other old men need to go?
Okay, well, they're still working. Put this in your phone before we forget.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name for the record, Anthony Morando, Land Use Counsel for Central Hudson. With me tonight, Brian Demisco, Project Manager from Central Hudson, and Greg Liverman from EDR. Thanks for having us tonight, uh, we know we're on for a public hearing. Uh, just a little bit of procedural housekeeping first, all a notice, requirements were properly met for tonight's hearing. Um, I actually have a notice package I'll give to B with the affidavits regarding the noticed mailing, publishing, and the signs posted. Um, and those signs are posted pursuant to the discussions we had back in February in terms of their locations, so I'll just give this to B.
Give it to Secretary for the Record. Okay, thank you.
We also provided written responses, uh, back in early February to the comments that we previously received. Um, uh, we also submitted materials to the town of Poughkeepsie as well. As you know, uh, this project involves both the town of Poughkeepsie and the town of Wapanger. So the application before you this evening is a site plan application and wetland permit request, uh, for the reconstruction and replacement of the KM line, the 69 KV electric transmission line that is located mostly in the town of Wapanger, uh, but also extends into the town of Poughkeepsie. Um, the project is relatively straightforward, as we've presented in the past, although we don't like to ignore, uh, the potential complexities of it, uh, but it's effectively a one-for-one transmission line and pole replacement. Um, Brian's gonna walk you through a presentation, which this board has seen, uh, most of this in the past, uh, but for the benefit of the public tonight, we will walk you through that, um, and then Greg will take you through a couple of the updates on the, uh, project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Brian Demisco, Central Hudson Gas and Electric, uh, Project Manager on this particular project. What I'll do is take you through the, uh, slide presentation, um, I think, uh, this is what we pretty much covered the last time we were here, but again, as Anthony said, uh, for the benefit of everybody that's here tonight. So it is a, uh, transmission line replacement project, 69 KV. And the total distance on this line is 2.8 miles, uh, the majority of it is 1.7 miles in the town of Wapanger, the remaining 1.1 miles, uh, in the town of Poughkeepsie. And the municipality dividing line between Poughkeepsie and, uh, town of Wapanger is the creek that you see there, the Wapanger Creek. History and existing conditions, um, nearly all of this, uh, line, it's mostly a woodpole construction, and, uh, uh, the origins of the line date back many, many decades, nearly a hundred years ago. Field inspections, um, over the time, uh, that we have been operating this line have identified significant amount of long-term degradation, uh, to both poles and conductor wire. Uh, we have maintained that line over the many decades that it's been in service, repairs, emergency, or, uh, normal maintenance, but you will see that, uh, through, uh, some photos that we have, uh, that the overall, uh, condition of the infrastructure is reaching the end of its life, um, and it is time to replace that. Uh, in addition to replacing the line, it doesn't meet current, uh, standards, uh, operating standards for electric transmission lines. Uh, so we'll not only be able to replace, uh, with new equipment, better equipment, but it will meet current, uh, design and, uh, uh, operating standards for transmission lines. Um, we are obligated, as you might imagine, to make sure that our infrastructure is, uh, operating, uh, to, uh, its, uh, capacity, and, uh, that includes electric transmission lines and our electric transmission line system, uh, so this would be a, uh, entire replacement of that KM line. Benefits of the KM line replacement are first and foremost to maintain, uh, reliable electric delivery. We certainly don't want to have any gap between the service that we're providing today and something that is less than that. We need to have a seamless, smooth transition, uh, to maintain electric deli, uh, delivery, uh, and to do so safely as well. Uh, the new system would provide increased storm hardening, um, and that would be beneficial to our customers. Uh, that new design will meet all current construction standards, including, uh, NESC, National Electric Safety Code, IEEE, Industry of, uh, the Institute of Electric and Electronic Engineers, as well as Central Hudson Design Standards, uh, so we would be using self-weathering brown steel poles, very similar to what we're doing currently on the TV line, another 69 KV line that we're doing here within the town of Wapanger that you're very familiar with. Permanent removal of other inactive infrastructure would take place at the same time, so, uh, you'll see in some of the, uh, existing and proposed, uh, photos that we have, the renderings, that it cleans up very nicely, that there are, uh, is some retired infrastructure that we'll permanently remove at the same time. Uh, the KM line will stay in the same right-of-way, uh, with generally the same pole locations, uh, so it will look very much, uh, in terms of where it is today, it will be that way with this project, and will maintain the same voltage, 69 KV. Pole information, you can see across, uh, the top line there, uh, the existing poles, 49, uh, pole locations currently, and we would remain at 49 pole locations. The average pole height, uh, currently 54 and a half feet would increase on average by about five feet to meet current design standards. Uh, maximum pole height currently is 78 feet, uh, that would increase slightly to about 81 and a half feet. Uh, minimum pole height currently 33 and a half feet, and the, uh, minimum pole height on the replacement would be 36 and a half feet. So slight increases, not, uh, not large, but certainly, um, uh, perfect for meeting today's design standards. Sampling, uh, sampling of the existing KM line, some pole degradation, um, very clearly we have, uh, woodpecker damage, you can see in those top two photos. We also have, um, pole rot, unfortunately, pole degradation, uh, wood poles don't hold up well against the seasons of weather, uh, snow, ice, rain, heat, uh, ultraviolet rays, et cetera, uh, you can see the impact. More damage, similar to what I just spoke about, and, uh, there's some woodpecker holes again on the top. Existing and replacement KM line, uh, pole that you see there, so on the left is the current condition of one of our KM line poles, and you can see that it has, uh, both the KM line and retired infrastructure on that same, uh, pole line. It's, uh, do, what we call a, uh, I'll call it double duty, uh, but you can see with the, uh, middle pole, the rendering, that would be the replacement for what you see on the left, uh, much cleaner, uh, brown steel, uh, pole replacement for wood, uh, and you can see on the far right what that typically looks like with the conductor wire, uh, far less infrastructure involved, uh, and cleans up nicely with the replacement. Same conversation here, just a different type, this happens to be within the town of Poughkeepsie side, uh, just, uh, across the, uh, Wapanger Creek, uh, you can see that current, uh, uh, pole configuration, again, with retired infrastructure, and you can see how that middle, uh, pole and, uh, on the far right there, how that cleaned up nicely with just the KM line and, uh, brown steel pole to replace that. This happens to be on the, uh, Hudson Valley Regional Airport property, uh, this would maintain the, uh, the configuration that you see there for that pole location, uh, but it would be reduced to the, uh, less infrastructure with just the KM line replacement. Uh, the planned schedule, as you know, we filed our, uh, site plan application in December 2021. If we, uh, are planning ahead and everything goes, uh, well with our permitting, uh, schedule here, and moving ahead for construction, we would look at fieldwork starting in the August, September timeframe of this year, um, that would be followed by project completion, uh, by the end of the year, December 2022, weather permitting. Uh, we always build in some time to recognize that we do get hit with storms on occasion, um, similar to what we just had up in Kingston in that district, uh, we just had a very large ice storm up there, uh, but final restoration and, uh, work would be completed thereafter, uh, we're looking at winter, uh, spring 2023. And I'm gonna defer at this point to Greg Liverman from EDR. Greg?
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, everybody, Greg Liverman, uh, Principal with Environmental Design and Research. Um, I'll speak to you a little bit about, uh, the application materials that you've received and walk through some, uh, maybe more, some of the more, um, common environmental aspects related to the SEAKER review, uh, looking at the SWIP and some of the ongoing discussions we've had with town consultants. Uh, the application materials that were submitted, uh, we think it was a pretty comprehensive package. It included not only the application form materials, but it included a full environmental assessment form with a number of attachments, uh, just listed a few here, there was a, a figure set, uh, there was a project description, there was an evaluation of the impacts and magnitude and importance of impacts, uh, we included copies of agency correspondence, uh, for instance, the ship-o sign-off, uh, really with respect to historic and cultural resources. We provided a memorandum on construction impacts, a visibility report, an agricultural data statement. Really, the idea was to provide a complete application for this board to review, um, under SEAKER, and really give you, hopefully, a very clear picture of what this project entails. We also provided the plan and profile drawings, a stormwater pollution prevention plan, uh, and a wetland delineation report. So, looking at some of the highlights, uh, some of the things that I think are more common for a project like this, that will be of the board's, uh, purview for review is the stormwater pollution prevention plan, uh, so we prepared a Speedy's compliant, project-specific SWIP for the construction activities associated with this replacement project. Um, we believe we're in coordination with the town's consultant on this and will coordinate the MS4 approvals, uh, we'll walk through the, the details on how we want to sign off on the NOI, because we are in another town with parts of this work, and then once we get the coordinated MS4 sign-off, we'll send that notice of intent into the DEC, and we'll coordinate that process as, as we have in the past, but I don't think technically there's too much open-ended at this point, I think that that process is, has worked out pretty well in the past. Uh, from a wetland and flood plains perspective, the entire right-of-way was delineated for wetlands in the fall of 2021. Um, there will be minor temporary work only, there's no permanent im- impacts to wetlands, there's no loss of wetlands, uh, many of the wetlands will be crossed through the use of construction matting, which is construction mats placed on the wetlands so that construction vehicles can cross without disturbing the soils, and then the matting is removed, uh, once construction is completed. Uh, similarly, there'll be no change in hydrology, uh, poles are going in at a one-for-one location. Similar to flood plains, I think we have about nine or 10 poles within existing flood plains here within the town, they'll be placed in the same spot, no earthwork, no filling, no additional impervious cover, so there's no anticipated change to the flood storage capacity, all the work will be temporary, and to Brian's schedule earlier, looked about four to five months of construction, so if we're looking at nine poles, that's a fifth of about, so it's a pretty quick effort in some of these areas, so it's just, it's, we're not really looking at a, a pretty significant scale. A lot of this is pretty, uh, relatively temporary and fast-moving. Uh, from an agricultural perspective, there are a few isolated, uh, locations that are located within a certified agricultural district. Again, this is temporary work only, it's a lot of access to get to a pole location, to take the pole down and put the new pole up, uh, there'll be no changes in agricultural uses, there'll be no changes in, in the conditions at these locations, um, and we are, uh, aware of the New York State Ag and Markets letter, they included, uh, the guidelines for transmission construction on right-of-way. Central Hudson Construction crews are accustomed to this guidelines, to these guidelines, and are accustomed to implementing these guidelines where applicable. Uh, many of the items apply to this project, some of them we don't think are necessarily applicable to this project, and we're happy to provide an additional response to the town for your review and considering this action as lead agency. There was a visual report included with the submittal as well, that was prepared by Environmental Design and Research, our visual experts prepared that. It looked at multiple components. First, there was a viewshed analysis prepared, because this line is existing, we looked at what the existential viewshed of the existing line is, where can you see this line today? As opposed to where will we be able to see this line after the replacement takes place? Um, and what that viewshed analysis showed is that within a one-mile radius, the area of visibility increased by, I think it was less than a percent, because the line is already generally pretty visible in its current right-of-way location. Uh, we also looked at, uh, and prepared a, a listing of visually sensitive receptors, looking at the New York State Visual Policy to identify state parks, identify federal parks, identify some locally sensitive receptors that may, it may be a little bit more critical from a visual perspective, and based upon our field documentation of current views, visibility is relatively limited from these visually sensitive receptors. And lastly, we prepared a series of visual simulations to show what the proposed project will look like, uh, in its, in the, after it's built, and to Brian's point, there's a lot of consolidation of infrastructure, the new poles that are being proposed have a much, uh, slimmer profile, less cross bracing, and actually results in an overall streamlining of infrastructure within the right-of-way. As a secondary matter, one item I, we would, do want to inform the board of, uh, Central Hudson with any of their projects is undergoing FAA review. Uh, as you know, the airport is directly adjacent to this transmission line. Um, you can see here in the image above, this is New Hackensack Road and Jackson Road, Wapanger Creek is all the way to the right side, and the airport is just at the bottom of the page. Uh, we have, uh, determinations of no hazard on each pole from FAA, which is a very, which is a good thing, considering the proximity to the airport, uh, and all but one pole can go in as is without any markers, without any identification or any lighting. One pole will require lighting, and it's pole KM 26. You can see it here, it's, it is directly adjacent to New Hackensack Road. It's that three-pole configuration, and if you see the picture in the middle, you can actually see the airplane descending, coming into the runway, it's literally at the base of the runway. And the reason why that particular pole and not the others that are in the sequence is because New Hackensack Road sits up high, and when the analysis happens, that FAA performs, they look at a cone of radius from the runway, and because of the height of that pole and its proximity at the higher elevation adjacent to New Hackensack, that one was triggered for an additional, uh, lighting structure. However, it's worth noting too, that's the current three-pole configuration, that will be replaced with the two-pole configuration on the right, so it's gonna look a little bit cleaner through there. Uh, that is also right next to the lit intersection, there are streetlights, there are signals, there are other lighting in the area, so we don't anticipate this is going to be recognizable. Uh, and also, going back to our viewshed analysis that was prepared in the visibility report, viewshed in this area is relatively limited on a east, uh, on a, on a southwest to northeast basis following the runway of the airport, so we don't anticipate, uh, a significant change in visibility, and just for context, the picture on the left is that intersection currently, you can see the three poles on the left, and you can see the red, uh, stoplight and the streetlights, and the picture on the right are examples of other common lighting around the airport that we would expect to be more akin to what would be, have to happen at 26. It's a different nature of light, it's not intended to be downcast, it's not intended to look like a, a signal, it will be much less than what's being, than what already is located at that same location. Uh, so we just wanted to make the board aware of that, um, and happy to.
What color is that light?
Red. Sim, very similar to what you can see here, and they're, they're somewhat faint, they're a different style, they're, they're intended to do different things, they're intended to light from above, they're not intended to do down, downcast or anything of that kind of nature. So I think that is the end of our presentation, and happy to facilitate any questions.
Um, there's no other utilities on that, right? On these poles?
No.
No. When they remove the other ones, the wood ones, do they pull them all the way out, or do they cut them off?
They'll attempt to pull them all the way out. In some cases, what they'll do is if the butt stays below grade, they'll, they'll actually carve out below grade and nuke the butt down and then cover it up with.
I think you mentioned ages ago that the new poles are made out of some kind of material that prevent the woodpecker damage, I was impressed with that, what is it, again?
There's steel, there's steel.
What, what kind of, just, what kind of grade steel?
Corten, corten, corten steel.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So, but, so. That's really awesome. So how, what's the lifespan, I mean, a hundred years, I mean, our life's, you know, more than a human.
Decades, plural.
Gotcha, yeah, I hear you. Yeah, I hear you. Good, good.
Okay. All right. Well, with, being that we presented this, or they presented it, entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Make seconded.
Okay, motion's made. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on behalf of this application this evening? Okay. Seeing there's none. May I have a say? Anybody from the board have any questions other than the ones who we've already asked? So, doesn't look like we have any public comment this evening.
I know. I'm sorry. I think our presentation was longer than the construction of this line will be.
Yeah.
So, we appreciate that.
Just, I guess there's one question regarding the Ag and Markets letter regarding agricultural access on sheet three of nine, which I guess is the Reed Swenson? Is that the Reed Swenson property?
May I have to speak to that?
Sure. Just, I guess they were talking about the, it said a plan, a profile drawing, maybe requiring vision on sheet three of nine to accommodate for the proposed agricultural access.
Yep.
Is that the Reed Swenson property?
That's near Winmer Road. So, I think what Jason from Ag and Markets was referring to, when you get into, when you read the Ag and Markets guidelines, if you were citing a new transmission line, you would look to seek things, to put things on the edge of the right-of-way or put access roads on the edge of the wide way to not bifurcate or impact current agricultural uses. With this particular access point, we have stone wall on Winmer Road, which kind of precludes where we can enter from and where we use a lot, reusing the same area that we used for the prior TV line construction, which was cited in accordance with the landowner requests. So, we feel that as shown satisfies the intent of, avoids adverse effects. So, we don't anticipate a formal change to that, and we're happy to provide that in documentation.
Sure. I just think a written response to that would be fine. Just could consider record.
If we intend to do a, correct, a fairly brief letter, just respond to Ag and Markets and have it for your record, we'll do that coming up after this meeting.
Okay.
But it's, I don't think it's something that's going to introduce the information. I think it's more of something that's just going to.
Just a clarification at this point, and it's already been brought up.
Which of the recommendations from Ag and Markets don't apply to a replacement line versus a brand new line and things like that. So, but I think E D R will bring together a response to that.
Okay. All right. John, you have any?
No, I mean, they, they moved along pretty thoroughly with their submission. We did ask for a couple extra notes and clarifications to be added to the site plans. We haven't seen a revised plan set at this point, but I'm assuming one will be submitted at some point. And the only other question I had was, have you gotten any feedback from County D P W? Do you need any official permitting from them or?
Yeah. We haven't, we haven't heard yet from County D P W. I believe, I don't think we have any, any work within any county rights-of-way. However, typically, what will happen is as we progress at the site plan level, we'll coordinate with County D P W, walk the site. They can look at the area and they usually issue a letter indicating they're comfortable with it. But we, from, from an order of operations perspective, have typically started here and then go to that level. But I'd have to even double check because I don't even know that we have that on this particular project.
Does the D E C have any?
We have county and town. And similar to the TV line, our real property services department will provide the application to the county, Duchess County. And then, they'll, they may go out and want to look at the area, but they have, as they did with the TV line, they have to give us some new permit.
And they were circulated to as part of the SECA process.
That's right.
They were known as, yes. They didn't have, I mean, they didn't write anything back, so I should say.
Does the D E C fall into play in any of this? As far as the aquatic life or?
Just to close out the point on the county, there are two county roads. One is on Myers Corners. We're not crossing that nor are we doing work within that right-of-way. The other one is Basser with 77.
Hackensack is the county where.
Hackensack is county.
Hackensack is county.
So, we'll coordinate with County D P W accordingly. For D E C, yes, there are a few D E C regulated wetlands as part of this project. Central Hudson has a general permit under Articles 15 and 24 for maintenance of transmission structures. So, the process is as follows. There'll be a notification process to the D E C under their existing general permit for these minor temporary accesses across the two Article 24 wetlands. But there won't be a standalone joint application filing to the D E C. It'll be a notification under their general permit.
Okay. All right. Well, good. Okay.
I guess one question regarding mud, flood certifications, the town's going to have to, we have.
I think the way, the way I recall it playing out on TV line is there was a separate permit from the floodplain administrator, the building department.
Yes, I have a floodplain permit and a wetland.
Yep. And that, in the summary of information for floodplains is provided in that attachment either as a table of poles and they're, and they're shown on the plan and profiles as of the floodplain.
Okay. All right. So, I guess this point is really, from what we have, we could basically close the public hearing at this point. So, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. We still have, I guess, some information to provide to staff.
We'll get you that response from Ag and Markets.
Yep.
And the site plan notes.
Okay. Do we, the question would be is should we proceed to resolution at this point for Neg Deck or do we want to get all the information in first?
I think for purposes of a Neg Deck, I guess the question is do we want to do both at the same time?
I mean, I could certainly start drafting the Neg Deck. I think I have the thing that I need. From my understanding, the response from the applicant regarding the Ag and Markets is for purposes of clarification.
Yep.
Not information that I need. It's important for the record. It's not something that I would need for the preparation of the Neg Deck. We could do the Neg Deck and the resolution at the same time, or you could authorize me to prepare the negative declaration. You would have it at the next meeting. We would have a review letter and a negative declaration prepared should you choose to act on it at that point based on what is in our letters.
But for time's sake, why not just issue, I mean, do both and just speed it along a little bit and then put in a dendum in or something if they needed to finalize it?
I want to.
I don't see bringing this up over and over.
No. It's my letters are almost nothing at this point. It's just procedural items. I know that John had some clarifying things, but I'm sure that it will be handled. So, if you'd like me to, you know, if you'd like to authorize me to prepare the negative declaration and the resolution, I think we're in position to do that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, if you feel that there's a, conditioned out, there's enough, there's a minimal list now to condition? So.
Yeah.
On your end?
There's, there's nothing in our review letter that I could see holding them up from, you know, if it's a condition of approval, it's not anything that they can't address relatively quickly.
So, I'll enter, so entertain a motion to have the planner draft a negative declaration and a resolution of approval for the project.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded.
For the next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that going to give you enough time? Because I mean, I'd like to get the plans from you and change it to the plans so that those are reflected in this documentation. Would you have enough time for the next meeting or would you prefer the first and eighth?
Yeah. I mean, we could, if you think, if.
Or a new first day.
So, if you, if you want, I mean, let's just all make, it's if we want, I mean, we could, let's approve them to draft it.
Well, I guess actually, there's, there's one issue. Would you prefer we do the Neg Deck resolution so you could go to Poughkeepsie and get anything from Poughkeepsie? That way, you don't have to change the plan set.
I was going to actually, yeah, we can't go, Poughkeepsie's waiting, I want to say, Poughkeepsie's anticipating we'll have a secret complete before they put us back on the agenda. So, we would like to get the Neg Deck up. I defer to the board if you think it.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
So, let's, so as a, for, so let's keep it clean and let's just do the Neg Deck at this point.
Yeah, even the plan set.
I mean, the next, the Neg Deck, you can do the Neg Deck for the next meeting. I don't think anything really has to be submitted for purposes of the Neg Deck.
Right.
And then, you know, you could have, you know, once that's on, you know, and even if, you know, we let Poughkeepsie know that it's coming and they can put you on, I don't, you know, I don't know if they want to have it in their hands before they schedule it or not. I will talk to the planning board attorney to see what her thoughts are. So, you know, that one will speed it, you know, we want to, we would like to get rid of it.
Yeah. All right.
I don't think they'll have a problem either.
Right. But I think.
You have a planning board attorney better than I do.
So, I, I think that's probably, you know, the least amount of work for them.
So, let's amend the resolution at this point, just to prepare the, to prepare the negative declaration at this point. So, the motion was made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So, motion carries.
And that's for next week, that's the March, the second one.
And that would be for the, right, that'd be for March the 21st.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, our next item on the agenda this evening is a site plan and special use permit for
Good evening. My name is Wendy Berger. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cole Shots, representing the applicant. This is the property that is the Subaru property. It was a Mini property. Maybe the car's a little bigger for this application than the last. It was approved in, I believe, 2013 for Mini. The board heard application for Subaru in 2021 and approved that. And there's some additional improvements that are proposed for the dealership. These improvements include increasing the size of the property by 11, by the dealership, not the property, I'm sorry.
Right.
By about 11,400 square feet and some other changes. I have our project engineer here to just briefly explain them. We've had the benefit of some comments from your professionals, and we understand there's some things we still have to address. But I'd like to call our engineer, Kyle Bardwell, to just briefly explain what's proposed.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Everything's falling, but yes, that's okay. Too much of it too.
Thank you, Wendy. And for the record, my name is Kyle Bardwell from the Labelle Associates, formerly the Chasen Companies. Today, we're here on behalf of prestigious family of fine cars. As Wendy said, this is most memorable as the existing Mini Cooper site with, up front, they had the Mini Coopers up on the hill. So, we're proposing an 11,000-square-foot addition to the existing building on site that will make up mostly auto parts storage as well as some additional showroom space. We are proposing less than an acre of disturbance on site with a minimal amount of impervious increase. We've received comments from the Duchess County Planner, from the town engineer, C P L, and we'll be addressing those comments at the 21st. We'll make a submittal back to the board. Tonight, I was going to talk a little bit over the site plan and then wanted to go over any questions the board had, as well if we wanted to address any comments made in those comment letters. So, shown with the gray hatches is where we're doing our building additions on the back of the property. As Wendy stated, in May of 2021, Subaru received site plan approval for the signage on site. So, now, we're here looking for site plan and special use permit on the proposed building addition. We are trying to incorporate the existing stormwater features on site and have the least amount of disturbance to the existing stormwaters on site. So, you'll see where we have our sawcut lines and new impervious to try and incorporate those stormwater systems into our proposed design. At this time, I wanted to open up to any questions from the board, and if we wanted to go through any of the comment letters, we can do that as well.
What's the usage?
For, so this is a, this will require a special use permit in the highway business for motor sales.
Well, you could, well, you could take the microphone out of there so you don't have to hunch over. It's kind of painful to watch you.
I appreciate that.
What is the usage of the addition?
Sure. So, some of the space in the addition will be used for auto parts storage, additional space for showroom, and we're also having a wash bay and service bay in the addition.
Service bay, was it just for prep or?
First, if you had your, like, an issue with your car, you would bring it in and they would do.
So, it's a regular service bay, it's not just for prep or anything?
Correct.
And Kyle, could you just tell me a little bit about the wash bay?
Sure. So, one of the comments in the review letter was regarding the internal wash bays and how, you know, waste from those would be handled. So, the wash bays are covered, and there would be a drain at the bottle, at the bottom of the wash bay. The drain would pick up any contaminants and go into a recycled system where basically it takes the contaminants out and uses the water for the wash bay system just for, you know, power washing the cars. At an eventual point, the waste that's taken from the wash bay is hauled off to a licensed facility. It doesn't enter any of the stormwater or sanitary septic system on site.
It's all the, all the wa, all the recycled water?
For, yeah, for the, so for the wash bay, the recycled water just gets used in the wash bay again until eventually.
Doesn't discharge at all?
No.
Do you have a contract with the third-party vendor for that?
Yes.
Yes, we do. So, and then.
In place?
Yeah. So, in the next submission, we're going to be supplying from them exactly.
Is that the same one that did the work before?
Green Edge BioJack is the system that is used in the wash bay and service.
So, contract.
And it's not a very good system as I understand it from the client when they were explaining, a little above my paper, but when they were trying to explain it to me, it was, it's an upgraded system from what was there before.
Correct.
And there'll be a contract in place?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And if you ever terminate service with this company, you'll have another one in place immediately?
Oh, yes, they, they will do that. Because they, they live in the bio-integrating system and they want to use that system. That's what they have.
Let's get that information on the record next time.
Yes.
Question I have is, in seeing the application, any elevations of the outside of the building?
Yes. So, in the March 21st submittal that we'll be submitting coming up.
You'll include that.
Will include the elevations. We're also going to have a lighting plan, photometric plan for the site as well as a landscaping plan.
Okay.
Also, I note that really the grid nine side of the building is basically remaining the elevation the same. Let's see how the other side is changing.
That's correct. As you can see here, you know, facing the site from nine, you wouldn't even notice the addition. It's tucked behind the existing building.
Yep. Is there currently a service area in that building?
As far as I know, there is a current existing service center as well as a wash bay. We can put further detail inside.
Yeah, that's one question I have. You said one service bay is being added on the back?
You said one service bay is being added on the back? Just one bay?
So.
That didn't make sense.
It would be for two cars, and I think they can, what they would do is they would bring them in and they could double stack them, but it would be technically, you know, one area located for that.
So if I, if I could, the elevations and the interior floor plan from the architect will, will answer those questions, and I think it was a good question, and we'll make sure where, we'll provide you that information. I, I have not been in the building, so I wouldn't want to say something that's not.
Yeah, just because those floor drains would be separate from the drain system that, yeah.
And there was also a question with regard to the well.
Sure. Yeah, so another, another item that was brought up in the comment letter was regarding two wells on site.
That was in the engineer's letter.
From CPL.
Yes.
So at one point, this project, this site was two separate tax parcels. The northern project, northern site had a house, an existing well on it. The house has been taken down. As far as I know, the existing well is not in use, and they're utilizing a well on the south side that services the existing building, which will be used for the addition as well. We're going to look into the, the well in the northern part to see if it has been abandoned, and if not, we can put details and comments on it for it to be abandoned in accordance with DOH regulations.
Okay. Obviously, have you reached out at all to Duchess County Department of Health regarding the well and septic on the site yet?
Yes, and it was a mistake in our EAF that we said that upgrades would be needed to the existing onsite septic system. Currently, there's 40 employees and the septic system was sized for 40 employees. We're proposing 40 employees in the future, so there's going to be no additional flow going to the septic. So we believe there would be no improvements needed to the existing onsite septic.
I, I had the benefit of being in the room when they were reviewing the application a little bit earlier, and they said they needed some more information on the parking sizes, the aisle sizes, some, some more information on the bulk table, and if you could do the parking on the bulk table, that would be a little clearer. Would you be able to do that as well?
Thanks, Wendy. Yes, so one of the comments also in a couple of the review letters was regarding being a little more detailed on the proposed parking and where the employees' parking would be, where the customer parking would be, and where service or, you know, car storage for, you know, Subaru vehicles. Exactly.
And a little more information on the valet.
Yeah, I was going to get to those letters in a minute. I just want to, before, just want to make sure that the board members have their opportunity to ask any questions they have, and then I'll go and I'll ask both the planner and the engineer to weigh in on, on the items that they have in their letter to get addressed. So with that said, is there any, any of the board members have any questions that haven't been asked? Okay. All right, so start with the planner. Go ahead and hit on the highlights of the.
Yeah, the first one would be for the board. This is an unlisted action under SEACER. I haven't seen anything that would suggest that coordinated action would be required. So we can, we can proceed with an uncoordinated action if that's agreeable to you. The, we had a few questions on the bulk table. In particular, the, the minimum landscape space was left void, but we're expecting, you just mentioned, we're expecting a landscaping and a lighting plan, so that will be updated. You discussed the questions about parking. We had a couple of questions about parking. I think that maybe even a sheet for the parking plan highlighting what area is used for what purpose would be useful. Maybe a slight revision to the, the parking calculations. It looks like they had been changed at one point. They don't quite add up anymore, but we'd love to get some clarity on that. In particular, there is a distinction between 190 inventory spaces and 180 employee-controlled spaces. I'd like some clarity on, on what the distinction between those two categories is and then where they're going to be shown. Once we get that information, I understand that there is deviation from the, the code prescribing off-street parking. If the board finds it agreeable, they would need to issue a waiver for that. Lighting and landscaping, we're expecting, and that brings us to the end of my letter.
Yeah, we found, we found no issues with any of the comments in the letters. We're planning on addressing all to the best we can. We will put a little more detail on the parking on site. Obviously, the car dealerships were not proposing full drive aisles and full-depth parking spaces as it's not meant for the public to be parking, it's more for onsite storage. So to maximize, you know, their onsite storage, they would rather decrease the drive aisles and parking spaces for that.
So you're going to provide that information as requested?
Correct.
But you will, but you will allow the access, full access around the, the building for fire department access?
That's correct. So we would, we would suffice for one of those drive aisles to be sufficient for a fire truck.
Yeah, they, they touched upon many of the comments we had in, in our letter regarding the washwater recycling system, the second well, the septic, apparently that doesn't need to be changed. One question I had that I didn't hear anything about, are there oil-water separators existing for the, for the existing building and will they be provided for the new service bay?
And so we were going to look into that comment and specifically the oil-water separator as it relates to the stormwater design on site.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's a, a kind of a question. So for the, for the oil-water separators, that would be from, proposing from the roof runoff? Is that?
No.
That's the floor drain.
All the floor drains in the service bays.
Oh.
Have, have a separator on them and a storage tank that's pumped, you know, usually every couple of months or whatever, clean harbors or whatever.
Okay, yeah, so for, in, in our aspects, for the wash bays and the service bays, we're doing these recycled water with contaminant collection that would be hauled off site.
Oh, so it's the same.
So it's, it's.
I think what they're, what they're getting at is the, this is something that you have to coordinate with the, you know, the architect. It's if there's, if you have drains within the building in those service areas, so if you have cars that come in wet, you know, they're going to drip on the floor. If there's a floor drain, a collection system in the building, those drains would have to be tied together and then run into an oil-water separator. Usually, they place them outside the building. That would have to be shown on the plan if that's the case.
Okay.
Okay, so just, that's something you want to coordinate.
Yeah, we just, we just want to know that there's no interior floor drains that are going to tie directly into the stormwater without any treatment.
So we'll, we'll speak to the architect to make sure that we get the information coordinated between everyone so we can address them properly. I understand the question, and I, I've seen that system before.
Yeah, I've seen it done both ways where they just don't put floor drains in.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
I think that covers it pretty well.
The board engineer, did you have any?
No, no, I, I think we touched upon pretty much everything else, so.
I can't see your name, the sun is fucking.
Okay.
How many cars are proposed on that site at its peak?
At its peak? We're proposing, I believe, 437 spots, some of which, I believe, approximately 50 to 60 would be, you know, for customers, employees, and the additional would be car storage.
So I'd be curious about that. I did a, a quick run of your parking calculations. I think that they're lower for employee and customer, I mean, I mean, customers and, yeah, employees. I think you'd have fewer than that. My calculation brought it to 37, but I'd be happy to double check once you.
Sure. Yeah, we're definitely going to go through all the numbers and make sure that our letters jive with our plans and make sure everything checks out.
Because I could be wrong, but it's, it's a cap of 10 for customers at these.
A cap?
I think so. Yeah, double check.
Because we have to give you all that parking information.
No, you're going to have to revise. Take another read of it, though. I think the employee is 27 and I think the customer is 10.
Could you also check when you do the photometric, the lighting around the new spots for the cars, the new display spots? When I'm going north on 9, they really shine into the car, so they might have to be shielded on the west side of the lights. So they're there to show off the cars, but they're bleeding onto Route 9.
Okay. So there's existing lights on the, the west side of the building?
Yeah, in the showroom.
Right, it's where you took the berm down.
No, it's not the, yeah, it's not the showroom, it's the ones right outside.
The display spots on Route 9.
And one other question that we had for the board tonight was related to the SEACER aspect and how we were going to move forward with the SEACER process. If it was an unlisted action, if we were going to go through SEACER and if we could set up a public hearing for the project.
Well, I mean, it is an unlisted action, but is it determined that it's significant to have a public hearing? That becomes the.
In, in many ways, it is very similar to what is existing. The changes are going to be on the rear of the property and largely shielded. I leave that up to you. I don't, I don't see any major red flags that would come up.
There are no residences there, right?
No.
That Jason's not property at all, right?
No. I don't think they need it.
I don't think so.
All right.
So I guess the other question is for site plan?
No, for a public hearing.
No, no, I'm just saying, is do we require for the site plan amendment?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I don't know if we do for the amended site plan.
What about for the special permit?
If it's a.
Probably for the special.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Oh, special use permit's going to require a public hearing. Because you're amending this, yeah, so we are going to have to schedule a public hearing in the future. Yeah, that's, that's the, I believe that's required for all.
Yep.
Yeah. All right. So that we will be doing at a future day. To schedule that now, would that be premature to schedule now or do we wait till the?
Do they want to see this other stuff addressed first?
I mean, I think we need to get the full submission so that we can.
Is there a date we could work towards that we possibly could special for hearing? That we could coordinate with?
Sure, and to help with that, we were planning on submitting back on March 21st with, you know, all the items addressed.
So 21st to be.
So you submit on the 21st before the first meeting in April?
Yeah, I think March 21st is the next submitted date.
That would be for the, that would be for the second meeting in April.
That would be for April 18.
April 18?
If you submit on the 21st.
Correct.
Yeah.
So is it possible to hold the place for us for April 18?
Yeah. We could. I'm assuming. If the application is, is fairly complete, then the worst case, it would have to be adjourned if there's a lot of unanswered questions that need to be addressed. We could do that.
We would appreciate it.
So somebody want to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for April the 18th?
So move, second.
Okay, I actually made second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll schedule for the April 18th meeting, the public hearing. Anybody have any other questions, I guess, for the applicant at this point? Pretty much pushes us off until that date.
But in next month, the ice will warm faster. And that's why, it's a good thing.
So you should put in the pressure on your professionals to make sure they follow through and do their due diligence.
That's the best way.
Okay. Okay, you're welcome.
Awesome. Thank you very much, board.
All right, you're welcome.
I'm having some trouble putting the microphone back in here, so I might just put it there.
You could just, yeah, just leave it on the, leave it on the podium, that'll be fine. How are you? All right, guys, let's, we got, we got one more item to discuss. Guys, we've got one more, one more item to discuss here. All right? Okay. All right. So with that.
Please, that one just like it.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is discussion regarding a site plan and special use permit for Tarpon Towers 2 LLC wireless communication facility. Obviously, we've, we've all received a copy of the, the court's decision regarding this facility, and tonight, we've received some documentation here from, actually, a previous case in the town of Grange that our attorney has provided for us. So I'll leave it up to him for a brief discussion on this.
Sure. So with respect to the litigation that was brought by Tarpon Towers back on January 31st, 2022, the Southern District of New York issued a decision which directed the town, the zoning board, and the planning board to grant approvals to the application within 60 days from the date of the decision and, which would put it out to April 1st. With respect to the phrasing of, of the court case, the judge's decision indicated that the SEACER review was in violation of the Telecommunications Act and that the town had to move forward with respect to the approvals based on the federal statute and the federal shot clock. The court found that the shot, the so-called shot clock had been violated. And with respect to the court's decision, the, again, the court issued a requirement that the planning board and zoning board of appeals issue an approval within 60 days, but the court did not comment one way or another regarding conditions that might be appropriate. And it, in essence, left that to the discretion, that minor, really, that, that little area with respect to the discretion of the planning board. I believe when the issue was previously discussed, the board had indicated that it did not wish to have any kind of camouflage to make the pole look like something other than, you know, a pole. My general sense from the board was that it would be more, create more of an attention to the pole rather than make it less visible. So that's a type of condition that would be consistent with the court's decision. I had a discussion with the zoning board of appeals regarding some conditions that they might wish to impose with respect to the, that they might wish to impose with respect to the granting of the variance. The town operator code requires that there be no structures, houses, or I guess it's houses within 750 feet. And one of the conditions that the zoning board had suggested was that to maintain that 750-foot buffer where possible, there were some houses that were in there, but anything within the 750-foot buffer would remain undisturbed except for agricultural activities because it is a working farm. So with respect to the case that's noted, the case of Lucas versus Planning Board of the Town of LaGrange, which is a 1998 case that was issued by, by the Southern District of New York as well, and in that case, it was a similar situation where a cell tower applicant had challenged a decision of the planning board in the Town of LaGrange, took them to federal court, and in that case, the court did not issue a decision regarding the cell tower case, but the parties between themselves entered into an agreement and, which would authorize the cell tower to be built. There was a positive declaration that was issued in the, in the, in that agreement. They agreed to rescind the positive declaration. Subsequent to the action of the planning board, neighbors challenged that approval by the planning board, and it again went back to federal court. The federal court judge, in the subsequent litigation, after the consent judgment was issued, rendered a decision that said that under the SEACER regulations, anytime a court orders a municipal entity. anytime a court orders, um, a municipal entity, or actually even a private party, um, to undertake some action, the action is, under the SEAKER regulations and under the SEAKER statute, considered to be a type-two action, which does not require SEAKER review. On type-two actions, um, SEAKER review is concluded. So, um, in accordance with the decision in Lucas, as well as the decision in the Tarpon Towers case, this, um, in essence, the decision of the court ends the SEAKER process. So, um, based on that, um, the, the planning board's duties as lead agency to, um, complete the SEAKER process has ended. So the other involved agency, uh, the zoning board of appeals, would be, um, free to continue as a type-two action and issue its variance. The, uh, planning board cannot act until the zoning board of appeals issues a variance with respect to this, um, application. So what, um, I am requesting from the board this evening is authorization for, um, the town planner and myself to craft a resolution of approval, um, for the, uh, a resolution of conditional approval for, uh, the application and special permit, um, based on the court case as a type-two action. And, you know, should the board at this point in time wish to, um, have a discussion regarding other conditions that might be appropriate, we can include those in the, in the resolution of conditional approval.
Okay. Um, we'll put it up to the board members. Is there anything that we need to discuss regarding this?
Just what they're doing for, like, camouflage painting or whatever?
Yeah, it's pretty much, I guess, the only open, open-ended thing at this point.
Can they, um, plant an extension on the top of that tower?
Yes, they can later on.
Again, as-
Yeah, it was like another 10 feet or something.
Because that's nothing to do with us.
Correct.
But that's something that tells you-
What we could do is just pick the color?
Pretty much.
Pink.
Depending on, I, I would recommend a, like, a gray or a self-withering brown, like we saw with the-
Kind of woodland, yeah.
It's a little tall for the self-withering brown. The heights that we saw on the KM, uh, the, you know, Central Hudson Line are roughly the same height as the trees around them. They blend in nicely. I'm worried that a self-withering brown-
A gray would hide.
Yeah.
Certainly above the tree line would hide that.
Yeah, lighter gray, yeah, blend in with the sky a little bit, yeah.
Aren't they gray to begin with?
They're silver. It's a galvanized-
Yeah.
They're like a battleship.
But none of them are painted.
It's not gray.
I mean, do we want, I mean, do we just, is everybody comfortable with the galvanized?
Well, the one in Fish Gill-
Galvanized, do you want to do that? Do you actually physically make it something? Because I think, I don't know, the, the, the regular galvanizing might just be fine.
It's fine.
Well, the galvanized one in Fish Gill does stand out. The one over by 84 diner, it does stand out. It is very noticeable. And it says people's home, so a nice color of gray or something that blends into the background.
Whatever camouflage is the best.
I think painting, it's, I mean, it would stand out more.
No, look, look at them online. They, they blend in.
I've seen them.
So the color, so, so Malcolm, you're saying that the color, the light gray, you think, is?
I think a, a weathered gray, something that isn't-
Something matte, yeah.
Yeah, something matte that isn't going to catch the light, that hasn't going to reflect at all. I worry that the galvanized steel would-
Yeah, well, if you look at it from the houses that are close to it, they're going to be, they're looking up at the-
They're looking at, yeah, and wanted to blend it into a storm cloud or something like that.
Something into the-
Yeah, some kind of weathered gray.
Like the color of puffy clouds.
What happens to all the equipment that goes on? You can't regulate that. It could be black or, or galvanized or-
Usually I see it as white, it's big white things hanging off the side.
The antennas themselves-
Right, because the pole is one thing, but they're going to hang a lot of different layers.
It doesn't matter what color you paint it, it's going to, you're going to see it.
I mean, you're still, you're still going to see it.
Not to shine off of it.
That's what I'm saying, though. You're making a color for the pole that you can have stuff hanging off.
Now, we should make a statement and, and a local artist design it with color.
A mural all the way up.
Yeah, it's all the way up.
The history of the town.
Yes.
You could, you could paint, like, other fingers next to it.
You can. There's no regulation on it.
No, no, as I, I tend to agree. Let's, let's kind of stick with one thing and just kind of let them, but, I mean, we're, we're kind of stuck here, so.
We're stuck.
Yeah.
I vote gray. Make them paint it gray.
Right. Something non-reflective that camo's- So like a flat, like a, a flat gray.
Yeah, non-reflective, fat, flat earthy color would be done.
Flat matte gray.
So flat matte gray. Okay. So as that's for the, so that would be for the color. So now we need an, need to authorize, uh, we need a motion to authorize the, the planner and the attorney to draft the resolution of approval.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so motion's made, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Seeing none? Huh?
Good.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right, so you're not opposed, so it's everybody's, okay, all right. Okay, seeing as none, then motion carries. All right. Is there anything else we need to discuss this evening? Now, it's, uh, we don't have any other business this evening. I'll entertain a motion to-
I'll make that motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.